I think we're ready to go. It's after 7:05 tonight. The hearing for Stone Ridge will be on the traffic study. Any additional questions that come up also we'll handle. It's nice to see we got the assistant fire chief here and also the town planner. I mean, the town engineer. The town planner is not here tonight, correct? Mike, do you have anything to add on the traffic before we get started? Or you want to wait for the presentation and then make some comments? We'll do that. And you want to do the same? All right, why don't we go ahead and dive into the traffic report? And we've got an update from our consultant that we can also review. All right, great. You want to ask him a question?
Just before you start, so it clarifies in reading these reports, they say something about a Phase One and a Phase Two. Now, from what I read, I believe Phase One is the food warehouse in the 40B. And then it's Phase Two if you decide to go on and construct the rest of the buildings.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And so I'm just going to really just turn it over to Liz Altman with TEC to go over the traffic report and address any of the traffic-related questions. For the record, Israel Lopez with the Gutierrez Company, Liz Altman with TEC, and Will Park with Sims Mania, our civil engineer.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, Liz.
Hello, Liz Altman with TEC. I wanted to address just a couple of things in the traffic study and then some of the questions that we heard last month. And then take any additional questions. So the site, the overall site has a MIPA 61 finding, Section 61 finding.
You may have to bring that up a little closer.
There's an overall MIPA approval as Section 61 finding where there is mitigation associated with each development phase. So, as I said last time, the first thing that we did was generate traffic for the residential development and add it to the Restaurant Depot. And we came up with that, those, the two traffic generators together are still less than the Phase One traffic associated with the MIPA 61 finding, Section 61 finding, which was for 150,000 square feet of office. So initially, we studied the intersections of Cedar Road with, Cedar Street with Deer Street and Cedar Street with the northbound 495 ramps. And your peer reviewer asked to, for us to also look at Cedar Street with the southbound ramps. Essentially, this is the trip generation I was talking about. It's less during the peak hour than what was previously approved for Phase One. Essentially, what happens with the addition of the residential traffic at the intersection of Cedar Street with Deer Street, the intersection continues to operate with good levels of service or acceptable levels of service with the residential traffic. And at the Cedar Street with the 495 ramps, both northbound and southbound, the operations of those intersections are virtually unchanged with the addition of the residential traffic. You can see that the southbound ramps, currently the off-ramp, has some delays during the peak hour. The addition of residential traffic, very little impact. The delays are not significantly increased, nor the queue. So we are not recommending any improvements at this time at the ramps. And the improvements as required are under construction at Cedar Street and Deer Street. So once we hit, go into Phase Two, then the roundabout at the southbound off-ramps will be evaluated. And further evaluation of the northbound ramps. Your peer reviewer agreed with our trip generation and our analysis. The next thing that we had heard about was pedestrian circulation and getting our pedestrians down to the Upper Charles Trail. There are sidewalks provided throughout the residential development along the buildings. And there are sidewalks provided along the west side of Deer Street all the way down to Cedar Street. Provides excellent access for residents to get to the Upper Charles Trail.
So let me just step in real quick, Liz, on this. So the comment and request, I want to be clear. So the comment and the request that came from the Upper Charles Trail Committee is a denial to widen anything on the trail? Is that correct?
No, no, I don't think that.
From the apartments to the trail?
From the apartments to the trail, there was a request to make it an eight-foot multi-use lane. We are providing a five-foot sidewalk. And the bicycles will be on a shared path with the vehicles on Deer Street. So there will be.
That makes sense. You've got a major apartment complex coming in. The calculation is approximately 2.3 people per unit. Approximately three bedrooms could be more. And you want the bicycle traffic to be in the road with the rest of the traffic instead of being proactive and having and utilizing an actual walkway bike path to get there.
We're limited a little bit by space on Deer Street, especially across the bridge. So we have provided a five-foot sidewalk, which is what's required by ADA requirements. And the shared path is not unexpected for bicyclists to get down. It's only a couple, that's not even that far, just to get down to the Upper Charles Trail.
How many feet is it, do you know? Does the developer know how many feet it is? From the apartment complex, from the first building, approximately to the trail?
I don't know off the top of my head. Sure we can get that?
I really want you to take a look at putting something there. If you would, please consider that. That is a safety issue. Specifically, if you're going to be building out additional buildings on that street. It's paramount that there's some type of mechanism to safely get to that trail.
Right. They're also providing rectangular RRFBs, rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the Deer Street crossing of the trail and share the road signage along Deer Street.
And that flashing beacon is staying, correct?
Yes. Yes. And that's actually more than what is on the southbound ramps. The southbound ramp that crosses the Charles Trail right now just has a sign with an arrow. These, this will actually have the flashing beacon for that crossing.
Do you know what the actual width of the bike path is?
Of the walking trail itself, the Upper Charles Trail?
Yes.
I do not know. I can hear you. I don't know if that's on.
Okay, so basically what you're saying right now is that you're going to have a five-foot walkway that pedestrians can walk down to the walkway, the bike path as I refer to it. Okay? And that the bikes will share the same road with traffic?
Correct.
Have you thought about putting any markers in for a bike lane that would possibly make people aware of it? It's just a thought, too.
Okay. We could do sharrows as well, which is, you know, paint striping. We have two-foot shoulders and 11-foot lanes on Deer Street, which is a standard width for a residential or access road. There's not enough room in the approved width to put a full five-foot bike lane. So that's why we are recommending the share the road and having the bicyclists be in the roadway where they can be seen by the vehicles.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
It's about 700 feet.
700 feet?
Yes.
I have a quick question from the developer's standpoint. You're indicating you don't have enough room. Is it you don't have enough room under the current subdivision-approved phased project? Or is it because you'd have to go back and amend it to make it work?
Yes, we would have to go back and amend it with the, under the current subdivision. This is the width that was approved and the cross-section that was approved. One of the other questions was 24-foot versus 26-foot access circulation aisles. The, we are recommending 24, maintaining the 24-foot access aisles throughout the, throughout the circulation for roadway, for the vehicles through the residential development. The emergency access has been shown to be sufficient throughout the entire site with this width. Additional two feet of widening increases impervious coverage by almost two tenths of an acre. It's, widening circulation roads just invites slightly faster speeds by vehicles going through those roadways. So this is not where we want faster speeds. We want to maintain good access and a standard width with the perpendicular parking on each side of the roadway to get vehicles around but not have them speed through the site. So as I said, it's sufficient as designed with good access for the emergency vehicles. As you can see, these two slides, the original site was designed with a dedicated loop road with the pad sites having the off-street parking for each office, for each office pad. And then the Restaurant Depot. This is, we're maintaining the ultimate layout of the dedicated loop road in the future with two potentially office building sites. And then the residential site is essentially, is designed as the office building sites were with off-street parking and access to the dedicated loop road. So the loop roadway system is maintained as in the original subdivision application and approval. This is just a different land use and layout with the off-street parking from the loop road. Turnaround area is provided without going too far into the residential area. It's consistent with other residential access roads as far as width goes and access to the residential development. We have evaluated other access, alternative emergency access. But the environmental constraints on the site are such that it's just not possible without a lot of wetlands impact. And the la, one of the last things that I heard was the parking. We are providing parking at 1.75 spaces per unit or 476 spaces. The Institute of Transportation Engineers in their publication Parking Generation put out a peak demand recommendation that you can calculate for mid-rise apartments in a suburban setting. There, it's a little less than 1.3 is their peak demand that they show. So I feel that the 1.75 spaces per unit is adequate to supply the demand that this residential development will.
Wait till you get to our town engineer, town planner. Two spaces are going to be minimum.
I don't think that you want to overpark it either. So I think that that's a balance that the board has to consider. There's no sense, there's not a lot of reason to put in excess parking when it's going to be unused. So I will, if you have any questions?
Is there going to be any dedicated parking per unit? In other words, they're going to have certain places where they park? In other words, Unit A parks here, Unit B parks there?
I don't believe so unless it's the garages.
First come, first served?
Except for the garage.
How many units per building over here that you've got set up currently? Building A, how many units? And B?
Building B, I believe, are 80 units, or 70 units, 72 units. And then 99 in Building A, 75 in Building B.
75 in Building B, 98 in Building C.
And why don't you, while we're at it, why don't you give me the proposed rental rolls of the one-bedrooms, the studios, the one-bedrooms, the twos, and the threes? Do you have those numbers? I don't need them right this minute, but when you have time.
Sure.
Okay, you're good?
Yep.
Mike, do you have any comments currently? Compromised. Yeah, that really should connect. Well, this is a modification of the application, per se.
That's about it, the safety. Oh, and the mixed use, now you have residential use. There was a, the previous slides show connection down to the bike trail. Yeah, they, there was reference that they're now down to the bridge that was constructed. Obviously, if the planning board understood or knew there was residential uses going here.
Wouldn't have done that.
Things that would be different if you connect to that major bike trail. Now you have mixed uses, you have people coming from residential use by the restaurant depot, tractor trailer, state of the game.
What you're feeling on the 24, the 24 versus the 26 feet? 24 foot wide versus 26 on the loop road? Yeah, and that's beyond our, that's beyond our PRD. That's beyond our PRD bylaw. Right. Okay, thank you.
So we, there is going to be a dedicated loop road when the final development is built out. The circulation through the parking area is not intended to be a final circulation. It's for, while it is ending and not continuing in further into the site, we needed to give some area for the trucks if they pass the Restaurant Depot or passenger vehicles or emergency vehicles or whatever. They needed to be able to loop around without making some kind of three-point turn or 100-point turn or whatever. So we gave them an area through the parking to provide that access.
Let me ask you, I want to ask the question, and it's probably specifically not for traffic, but it is for, from an engineering standpoint. The changes that is going to start occurring and continue to occur, I think you'd be better off going back to the planning board, doing amended site plan, do a phased project with a temporary cul-de-sac, and then continue it on down when you finish out the subdivision. That would be the, probably the best way to address some of these challenges on the site. Number one, I think it'll improve traffic flow. It clearly would improve pedestrian safety and traffic safety. That's my particular comment. Because I think, when I see a loop road like this here and then we have a dead end originally, probably should have brought this in and went back to the planning board and get an amendment and do it as a phased aspect where you do have a temporary cul-de-sac, similar to a subdivision of a single-family subdivision, where you have a temporary one and then when you're ready for the next phase, it gets extended. That's my opinion. So why don't we just continue on? I'll take, I'll take an answer to that if you have one.
Yeah, sure. So I just want to back up. And I think it's important for us to just clarify dead-end road versus non-dead-end road. And look at the existing approved subdivision plan and how it worked. I think clearly you can see on the screen that the way that this development was intended to work is that you'd have a main access road which would not be parked, would serve 625,000 square feet of office space. Each of these building pads would be accessed off of this main road and would be surrounded by surface parking with internal parking circulation in and around each building. Moving then to the revised plan, we still have the main road which continues without any parking along the main road which services additional building sites which are surrounded by surface parking. So in terms of the change that's being proposed here, what we're talking about is simply swapping out residential buildings for what used to be office buildings. And so I just, I guess.
Yeah, but you're also going from an eight-hour or 10-hour day to a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week day on the site. So it's a little bit different.
With, with.
We're trying to work, and I understand the challenges you have of filling office space and conveniently enough and lucky enough that the planning board actually worked with you to modify the zoning to allow the Restaurant Depot to get in, which now starts your development process. And all we're trying to do from the zoning board perspective is the safety and the safest aspect of this process. And if I get a no and someone's not going to look at the aspect of having a bike path incorporated safely into this project, that's a problem. That's a safety concern. I have a problem with that. And I'm making that comment so that hopefully you'll take a look at it, see what you can fit, and try and work with that. That's my comment for now.
Okay, understood, and we will take a look at it. Why don't I turn it over to Will Park so he can address some of the other comments regarding the bridge?
Hello, Will Park, civil engineer at Estes Memorial Mall out of Cambridge. I'm actually first going to talk about the emergency vehicle access that we had reviewed with Chief Tuohy and Deputy Chief Nelson, who is here tonight. So what we're looking at, I apologize, there's a lot of lines on this plan. It does show the fire truck, which we confirmed actually exceeds the fire truck that is expected to be delivered later this month to the Milford Fire Department. It shows the fire truck entering the site here and doing the full loop around the building with no obstructions, easily making all the turning radius, radii. We also show in the off-chance of an obstruction in the drive aisles during an emergency response, we show the ability to easily zigzag through here. For example, if there were an obstruction here or somewhere in here. Similarly, we show being able to do a 180 starting here. Actually, sorry, this is doing a zigzag, starting here, coming through the intermediate driveway and entering this way. If there were an obstruction somewhere in this area, they would still be able to get around the entire buildings B and C. Similarly, a truck coming here, if there was an obstruction, could zigzag through here. So we've demonstrated the most difficult maneuvering, the most difficult maneuvers that a fire truck would have to experience in an emergency response. We've reviewed this with the fire department. I'll let the deputy chief speak to any comments they have on this, but I think it was received fairly well. The next exhibit, during that meeting, the fire department asked us to investigate the ladder reach, particularly in this area, in the area of the amenities to access Building B. And again, in between Buildings B and C with this area that we've dedicated for outdoor amenities for the residents. So this, these triangles here show places where a fire truck, again, their new fire truck that they're expecting end of the month. If it were to park in any of these places, what the, and this is all based on a template provided by the fire department, what the reach of their ladder is. The request was how far can the ladder reach to get someone out of the tallest or the highest floor, which is the fifth floor? The windows on the fifth floor go from elevation 53 feet above grade to, I believe, 57 feet above grade. What we show here, these triangles, the reach, shows access to the roof, which is 60 feet above grade. So the reach to get someone out of the fifth-floor bedroom window would actually be even greater than what we show here. Additionally, the bedrooms, I'm not the architect, but it's my understanding the bedrooms are located on the corners. And in the, in the middle here is either, is typically living rooms and obviously corridor in the middle of the building. But we believe this shows more than adequate access to the fifth-floor apartments.
Just a quick question for the chief.
Chief, it seems to me that everywhere where they have a location where the truck would be, you have access. But to me, it looks like it's at all the corners of the building. If a truck or a ladder had to reach for some reason to the middle of the building, you have the cars in the parking spaces. Does that restrict the reach of the ladder now? So, if all those parking spaces were occupied, that would pose no problem? Okay, thank you.
Do you have another piece like that in case we have two fires and two apartment complexes at the same time? That could happen. So, you'd have mutual aid? Is there a local community that has something that long? Pretty comparable. Okay, have you also have an overhang for the entrance of the buildings? Do you have any type of overhang going through the front entrance on the ground floor? In your designs? I didn't see anything. One of the last, one of the last applicants had an overhang, and we wanted to make sure if that was the case that the height of the fire apparatus would be able to get in there. As far as the bridge is concerned, is that, how's that? So, if there's a, if there's a fire apparatus and you have to get over that bridge, how much room do you have? Can another car come by you? No way, right? It really can't fit, can it fit two trucks going-- What's the width of the bridge? 26 feet? Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. What if the bridge burns? Is it, what type of material?
Precast concrete.
Precast concrete? Well, it can't burn. It can crack. As long as no one blows it. Yeah. No, I get the, I get the challenge with the, with the access.
I'll just, the, the bridge design has come up. SMMA was not the designer of record on this bridge. That was the previous consultant. The bridge was designed in accordance with the 2014 American Associates, Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, or ASHTO, and the most recent 2013 MassDOT LRFD Bridge Manual. And met all of those requirements. Additionally, it's my understanding for the seismic design, the structural design, the bridge was classified as a, quote, "critical and essential bridge", since the bridge will serve the only roadway leading to the development for the public and emergency vehicles. That definition from the MassDOT Bridge Design Guidelines is, critical and essential bridges are defined as those bridges. One, on or over the following national highway system routes, Eisenhower Interstate System and others. And number two, on designated emergency evacuation routes. So, seismically, it was designed knowing that this was single entrance.
Under the old plan, real quick, without the, the square footage of building that you had on this site before, what was the estimated employee count in that building? Do you remember? Not the restaurant, the, the next building that you had on, on your original plan. How many square feet was that roughly? 150,000? Okay. And how many people can fit in that building? What did you estimate?
400, 500? Yeah, depends on the use.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree, it depends on the use. But maximum-wise, 400, 500? 500? Give or take? Okay.
Give or take.
And the only reason I'm asking these questions is, you know, your traffic counts are based on the aspects from Phase 1, but you're increasing, you're increasing from 150,000 square feet, let's say, to 450,000 square feet of buildings. But the apartment complexes, as it currently stands right now, is estimated to have between 630 and probably 650 occupants, based on the 2.3 average per person from a 2010 census where that information has been, has been pulled from. So, when I take a look at that, I take a look at the square footage, I take a look at the roads, I take a look at the access, there's going to be a lot of people living on that site 24/7, not just necessarily during the day from an office building complex. So, I'm trying to relate those counts to traffic, to egress, access, safety, and fire protection. Okay. Did you get the rental numbers in yet?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I didn't--
You didn't get those yet? That's fine. We can, we can pick up on that. Okay.
I assume you must have looked at this, but is there any possibility? I'm looking at the map, and I don't see anything, but-- Any possibility of an emergency vehicle only second entrance?
Short answer is no. You might recall a constraints plan that I showed during the first presentation. There's the, I mean, Gutierrez has been permitting the, this one crossing for the last almost two decades. There's the Charles River, massive wetland systems, and then obviously 495, it, it simply isn't feasible.
Well, I'm not questioning if it's feasible or not, I says it's possible.
No. I mean, it's--
You'd have to cross the Charles River no matter what, right?
Correct. I, is it possible? Yes. Would it require putting in a roadway through that wetland that divides Cedar Street from the site? That, that's what would be required.
Well, obviously, the concern with everybody--
And, and the Army Corps may not allow it at the end of the day.
They may not allow it. But obviously, one egress and one entrance is always a concern for anything.
Right. And I, I don't know, I think it may bear references--
I'm just asking the question, is it, is it possible?
Well, it's not economically possible.
It's not the question, is it possible?
Anything is possible.
Okay.
Anything is possible.
All right, thank you.
I'll just add to that. It is physically possible. Army Corps would probably say pretty quickly that it is not feasible, just because of the thousands of square feet of additional wetland disturbance that it would require. The entire road would have to be wetland disturbance, essentially.
On the, on the truck itself, chief, from a lateral perspective, let's say you're, you're, you're going to be-- Can you bring, go back to the, yeah, where the, where the truck is? Let's take the second or third floor. You're in that same position. You're basically extending that ladder pretty flat. The weight of how many people that can take on an emergency coming out onto that ladder? I mean, is, is-- Talk to us about that process. I mean, if, God forbid, someone's got to come out of a, a second or third story, and the ladder truck is, is, you know, the arm is sticking out. What are you, how many feet can it stick out roughly? At level, yeah. Okay. So, and we, we saw one of those fail in Boston over age, correct? We saw one of those, the hydraulic section failed? Okay. So, I guess, the question is, from a weight-bearing perspective, how many, how much weight can that handle at one shot in a very dire situation? It's a 500-pound tip load? No, that's okay, but approximately, it's a 500-pound tip load? Okay. That's concerning. Okay. What else do we have to go through? Any other questions? Anything else you need to bring up on the, on that side of it?
I believe that concludes our presentation.
Not to, not to rehash what I asked earlier. Is it possible, I, I know finding a second entrance, and we already explained that. What about the bridge that you're going to build that's going to be there? Is it possible to put a one-way emergency loop around that bridge with only emergency access? I'm always going with the what-if situations and scenarios. Is that a possibility? You, you know what I'm getting at?
I do.
It would be not available to the public. It would not be available to anybody except in an emergency situation, most likely fire department. I can't see where the police would need it.
The bridge, you said going to construct. This is the constructed bridge.
Okay.
As you can see, great lengths, the applicant, or Gutierrez Company went to great lengths to design how these two incoming streams come in, to deal with the topography, to minimize the wetland disturbance, both temporary and permanent. That's the upstream side. And then here's the downstream side. So, you're talking about a secondary drive down through one of these areas?
Sort of a, almost like an emergency loop like you'd see off a highway.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You know, something that's not aesthetically pleasing, obviously.
I think it's the same answer. Physically, absolutely, it could be--
A one-way, a one-lane type loop?
Physically, it's possible, but again, I think MassDEP, Army Corps of Engineers, would quickly say not feasible.
And this would be fine? They would, they would say this is designed for the purpose of what we're using it all for?
Yes. I can't speak for them, but I would assume they would say that.
Have you run into this situation before?
Which situation?
This, these questions must have been asked by other boards somewhere down the road.
I think that, you know, like I mentioned, all the various, not only hydraulic and seismic design guidelines that the bridge meets, but it also met a handful of environmental permitting I could list off.
No, 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 I'm just--
But I think it's been reviewed enough that it, it, it meets, it meets all the requirements that, regardless of use. There's no additional factor of safety for residential or office use in bridge design, to my knowledge.
Okay.
I'm not a bridge designer. I, we're not the designer of record on this bridge, but--
Nor am I.
It's my understanding that there's no additional factor of safety if it's a residential use going in or, or office.
Have you seen any, have you seen a situation like this where somebody actually did put an alternate access in under these circumstances?
I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I am a biker, so I was interested in what you were talking about there. Now, there is going to be one sidewalk on the northern side of the road?
Correct, there's a five-foot sidewalk on the west side. So, coming on the side that's exiting--
Right.
The residential area.
All right. Now, when I ride the Milford Bike Trail, we share both, traffic coming both ways, pedestrians and bikes, and we also have railings where, you know, you can't go falling off and so forth.
Right.
I don't know if this is possible. When you think of the traffic and the trucks, why couldn't you set up a shared bike pedestrian path, just like the Milford Bike Path has, and put a railing up there, and nobody would be falling into traffic or falling into trucks, and they could share it going back and forth? And I don't know if that's possible.
Well, we did agree to look at seeing if we could put a, a wider sidewalk or a shared something on that same side. We'll, we'll look at it, see if we can fit it in. Again, it would, probably having some kind of creative bike path through the site would be, would be something that bikers would find attractive. But again, we're, we're up against environmental constraints and, you know--
Right, yeah, I'm just talking from the area, from where you-- Somebody will come out of the unit and get on the, on the sidewalk or this road to go down to the bike trail.
Right.
And that's the area I'm talking about that could be designed just like the existing bike trail that we have today in Milford. So, it's shared, you know?
We're going to take a look at it, but I, I don't know if we have the width off the top of my head, especially over the bridge, because you do have to go over the bridge to get to the trail--
Right, okay.
--from the residential, so. But that sidewalk is provided over the bridge.
Right, exactly. Yeah, and even with the Holliston part of the trail, we go over a few bridges there, and it's a little tight. But again, there's protection on both sides, so if you decide to, you know, weaver off a little bit, you're protected on both sides.
And I know that probably parents with children would just put their children on the sidewalk to get those, that 700 feet, right, if they didn't want. So, it would be more experienced bikers that would, would go in the, in the street, in the shared lanes.
Well, just a thought, is, I mean, from a standpoint of having trucks and cars, that you, you might protect the population over that 700 feet or whatever it may be. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
I mean, maybe it's not directly related to traffic, but to kind of build on what Mike said, just the, the number of units and the, the density is just a big concern I have, so just something to think about, especially with the water issue that we have. So, just things to think about, I guess, for future meetings. That's it.
And just so you know, Liz, the reason that, that I believe the, the issue has been come up concerning the bike trail and the traffic with the bikes is once this project is built out, you can't do it then. And when we start seeing 500 cars, probably close to 1,500 vehicles with the expansion of this, if this is built, it's paramount that we have it as a safety factor for the people that may be coming into an office building in the future. So, coordinating an effort to try and get some safety with the, with the residential aspect of the bike trail, the bikes to the trail, I think is, is pretty important. I know for this board it is. You know, I was going to mention the density aspect as well, specifically when we're trying to jam so much housing into the acreage that we're jamming. I think we need to take a look at the aspect of that as well. And again, try not to hold the issue concerning trying to fit, you know, a round nickel into a small square box because of a previous approval from the planning board. You know, and again, this is, this is paramount for safety and the resident's safety if, if they're living there. So, if there's a necessity to go back to do an amendment to make it right or make it comfortable or make it saleable, I'm strongly suggesting to do that from, from a safety standpoint and from an economic standpoint. Yeah, it may take a little bit of time to go back and do an amendment, but I, I believe it would be to the benefit of the entire site and specifically the safety of the residents. You know, and that's a comment that I just wanted to make. Jerry, you have anything?
Yeah, just a, a minor point. Parking came up earlier on, and I don't know if you're aware, and the board, obviously, our bylaw and the board's expressed an interest in two spaces per unit. Just so you know, the Robcham application, which is still pending, they've just agreed to revise their plans to show two spaces per unit. And I think, although, Mike, the Burch Hills, that has, does that show two spaces per unit? Two spaces per unit. So, you see the pattern. Two spaces per unit is probably what's going to be required, and you ought to be looking at your plans to see how to revise it to do that. I know that various studies show various optimum situations for parking, but the Milford experience has been that this is what they want, and they are enforcing it, and everybody's agreeing to the two spaces per unit. So, it's something you're going to have to look at.
And we will do so. I, I want to just make sure you understand that we hear you with respect to the safety concern regarding the access for pedestrians and for bikers getting down to the bike path. We obviously have the constraint that the road is currently under construction and will be delivered within a relatively short amount of time. Notwithstanding that, you know, we'll, we'll take-- Notwithstanding that, you know, we'll take a look at what we can do to improve the safety, whether that's widening the sidewalk or some other combination of things.
Can you get off, can you get directly across the street from the complex and do a five-foot trail to the, a five-foot path to the Charles? With maybe an easement or two from someone, if that's necessary? I know that it may be challenging from a wetland standpoint, however, knowing the conservation board, I think the way this town knows them, that I would hope that safety is also paramount to their mind if we could get a five-foot, a five-foot, a full five-foot dedicated bike trail to the, to the actual bike trail, separate from actually on the street. I don't know if you've actually taken a long look at that. I know Wildcat Pond is in there. And I, and, yeah, well, the Charles is over there too, right?
Correct. And there's also...
What about that Old Town Road? Who owns the Old Town Road there, Jerry? Right here. That's town of Milford.
Yeah, that, I believe that's a town-owned...
The town owns that?
Road, yeah. There is a conservation easement, and in our prior presentation, we included the plan. It was actually the last slide, if you have last month's presentation with you. There was a plan that showed the conservation areas that we've agreed to, that we've already contributed as restricted conservation land. That land runs immediately on the other side of the road and then also in some areas down by the, by the trail crossings. So, there are some constraints on either side of the road.
I see Deer Brook is there as well.
There would be some issues with us getting into the buffer zones, but we will take a look and see what can be done in balancing the width of the road, which is obviously built at 26 feet, with seeing whether we can increase maybe sidewalk.
Is that Old Town Road, Jerry, still in use?
It's, it's an old tie pack.
Right.
In use, no, except for hunters or walkers.
We couldn't get to there, huh?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'm all ears.
It varies.
So, it can be a challenging aspect of an emergency if you're on the second or third floor and the ladder's out, what, 65, 70 feet? Rescue's going to be challenging, even for the firefighter's safety, never mind the resident or two that are trying to get on that ladder. Okay. That's why when I start seeing these long arms and the access points, can you go back to the access points, please, on the fire apparatus? How far is that extended out, do you know? Is that extended out, how many feet? Do we have a, we have a calculation on how many feet that is, please?
I might have that template with me. Hold on one moment. Please.
What's the full length of the ladder? So, if the chief had to park the apparatus in the, in the middle of Building B, in the main parking, right in the, right away in back of cars, what do we know? How many feet do we think that is, approximately?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah. Building B.
Building B.
In the middle, right there, go to the middle, yeah. How many feet is it from there, approximately, to the building? To, you know, the second or third floor of the building?
So...
From there to the edge of the building?
12 feet to get from the center of the drive to the parking space, 18 feet for the parking space, that's 30 feet.
That's probably 30 more.
And then another 20 feet at most.
Okay.
50 feet.
50 feet.
I have here the template that...
The chief gave?
Yep. And, you know, it's all sorts of geometry for different angles, has different, different reaches, and this is what we use to calculate those distances. And again, what we show here is to the roof, which hopefully has nobody on it during an emergency situation.
Well, he's got 109 feet.
So, I think the majority of the ones we used were in this range, if I remember correctly. So, 60...
87 feet. Height 87 feet, reach 63 feet.
We were in this range. So, to get to the fifth floor bed, sorry to be talking into the microphone right over you like this.
61 feet?
In order to get to the fifth floor bedroom, where we can reach even further, and to reach the second, third, fourth floor, it's even, it's even greater horizontally.
This was, this is what I was worried about on the tilt.
Right.
You had too many people on the second or third floor, and it's, and it's laid, the ladder's laid out pretty flat, you know, this could tilt, if it's low enough.
It even has one that goes below horizontal.
Correct.
So, I mean, I'm sure there's a spec for it, but...
Yeah, eight degrees below.
Okay. It's an impressive piece of equipment.
Yeah, it is. That's amazing. That is amazing. Okay. Okay. Chief, as long as, as long as we can, we can, we can, we can make sure that the firefighters are protected and are as safe as possible, that's, that's the objective, that and the residents that live there. Fully sprinkled, they're still going to need hydrants too, correct? So, you're in discussions with what you'll need for that too?
Yes, I believe hydrant, I don't know if we spoke about, we'd already incorporated comments from Teta and Howard in one of their initial responses. Hydrants every 1,000 feet, isolation, this isn't really for fire emergencies, but isolation valves every, sorry, hydrants every 500 feet, isolation valves every 1,000 feet, if you're ever in need of maintaining a portion of line. We will also redefine this. I know some fire departments prefer to have the hydrants within 100 feet of the fire department, the wall-mounted fire department connection, so we will confirm that as well. I think they might be already. Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I will, I believe that's been addressed, but we will confirm.
Okay.
With the fire department.
From the, from the traffic standpoint, clearly, you're going to need to monitor the aspects of the traffic once, if it's developed, once it's developed. How do you make the adjustments if we need to make adjustments for traffic flows? Because now we're like on a reverse peak process with a residential application. How do we, who's going to make those adjustments? Who's going to make those decisions as far as the timing of those lights if we need them on 85 because of this?
Well...
Is that a coordination with?
With Mastah?
Yeah.
Right. What we, well, the analysis that we did was in accordance with, you know, the MEPA filing and what Mastah told us we had to do. There's no timing changes as far as we know from the projections. So, what we can do is just, if there's, we can monitor the traffic that's generated by the proposed site, you know, at a certain level of occupancy. We can put down a counter on Deer Street and see if the, the level of traffic is not what we expected, and then we can reanalyze things if it's changed significantly than what we projected. But the ITE numbers that we use are generally pretty conservative, so we've found that in the future, you know, and things that we've gone back and looked at and monitored, that they're pretty on point or a little conservative.
Okay. And have you talked about the school bus issue and children getting to the bus? How are we handling that? Have we discussed that yet?
I don't think that we've discussed school buses yet.
Similar to what we've done in the other projects. The school bus is certainly going to need to get up there, and I believe based on our past discussions with some of the others, it's not just one school bus that will be picking up children because they could be in different grades. It could be three or four different buses. So, with the other, the other process, they've tried to make sure we had a mechanism in place for that. History shows us that, that parents don't just leave their kids at the end of the curb anymore. Like when we were growing up, they basically sit in the car and they wait for them. We've even had one, one particular developer throw some additional parking down towards the entrance of the site so that parents could pull to the side as they wait for the bus. The bus pulls up in the middle of the street, and then the parents finally let the children out to meet the bus. This is considered a, is this, this is considered a private way, correct?
At some point.
At some point, this is going to be a private way.
The...
So, it's going to be controlled and it's going to be a private way.
But, you know what, can you point out to what point the private way or the public way ends on Deer Street? Do you know, have a plan that shows that?
So, Deer Street would end right where that, right where it's showing the outline. So, that's, from that point on, it would be private.
Right. So, the issue the chairman was talking about is, is school buses is a matter of policy and practice, and Milford do not go onto public ways. But if that is, to private ways, but if that's a public way right up to there, then the school buses can go up there. What I'm going to suggest is that you folks coordinate with Lynn Marcone, the transportation director, and see what he's going to want in terms of the ability for buses to, while they're going to go up there, number one, which it sounds like they might, I don't want to commit him, but then how is that going to be handled, particularly in terms of a turnaround at the end, because buses are not small, and there will be multiple buses in the course of a day. But that would, if that's possible, that would alleviate the concern of all the parents in the complex driving down to Cedar Street, parking on Cedar Street, you know, till their kids get on the school bus. So, you might have to have some accommodation at that point, both for the parents who, strangely enough, are going to drive their kids from the one, the building out to that point. So, you're going to need some parking, I think, set up up there for parents who are just going to do that. They do that on my street, two houses from the end of the street, they'll drive their car 10 feet and park it. It's just the way it is nowadays. It's what people are going to do. But I would work with the school department on that. Again, Lynn Marcone at the Transportation Department.
Yeah, actually, probably across from A, Building A, you've got parking there already. I don't know how many feet it is from there to the corner, but going with the two spaces, you could probably enlarge that or make it deeper or rearrange it a bit. But again, I'd like to see some accommodations for that. Lenny Marcone at the Milford School Department will give you some guidance on how many bus trips he's probably thinking that are going to go there based on some historical data. Any other questions? Comments? Go ahead, Mike.
Are you planning on hiring a new support agent, or have you? We would, we do plan to do so once the application, once we complete the application. As far as that changes the traffic, is there any...
Okay. Anybody have any other questions tonight? Anything else you want to cover while we're here? I know we covered the school, transportation, because the next hearing is going to be scheduled for June 6th. Let me kind of recap a few things that we did talk about. Clearly, the aspect of the trail and the safety. Fire department had a couple of the issues, including maybe an additional fire hydrant. We can knuckle that down a little bit. Still concerned about the densities. Our standards are usually eight units per acre. This is running about 16 per acre. I believe the town of Milford is, would like to have the opportunity, in the event if this is approved or is recommended with conditions, that, you know, we take a look at our Milford residents, our veterans are clearly an important part of this community. So, and that includes any jobs that may be available. When we get through and get down the lawn, I think what we're going to need to know is from you people is, from a, from a construction process, the timeframe, that it may, it may incorporate what those operating hours may look like. You're already working down the street now. When's the Restaurant Depot planning on, when do you have a date for that opening?
They should be open before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year?
October, November.
Okay. And then if you could get me the breakdown, I've got the units, but maybe the units per building, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and threes, if you could get me that breakdown by rental, what you're anticipating to charge for the rents, and then the, also the affordable rents for those similar-type units of what you anticipate they may be. And then, of course, we'll continue moving forward. Do you...
I believe that information was included.
It is, but I, by history, things change weekly when these things come through, and that includes some of the rates that may be charged. And I know one individual, because there was underground parking, he decided to change the whole footprint of the building and make it smaller. So, those, those changes continue to happen. I want to make sure that we're having the current data. If there's a change, you know, please let us know. With that, then I guess we'll continue to June 6th.
7:00.
7:00 PM. If you want to do it, you want to do it sooner or you want to do it at...
We should do it.
Keep it at 7:00.
Keep it at 7:00.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, with that, I want to thank everybody for coming, and everybody have a good night. Thank you so much.